Started it.
Why? Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, June twenty eighth. In compliance with state law, city council, special and regular meetings will be held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, I'm calling this meeting to order, and Krista, if you could please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Soltes.
Here.
Councilmember Hardnhausen.
Present.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Mayor Cotem Snip.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
Here.
Have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Krista. Everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for that. Before we move into approval of agenda, I know that Beth, and I will bring this up later, but I just want to say that Reagan, Beth and I went and attended the AWC Conference, and for you council members who were not able to make it, I just want to show you a picture of how much fun we had. This is the Parade of Flags, and Beth was our flag bearer at this event, and it was a very good event, and you can actually even see, oh, Derek Matheson's in there, too.
Yeah.
So Reagan was taking the pictures, so thank you.
Beth didn't know I got that candid of a shot.
Yeah.
I was just trying not to drop the flag.
You did a very good job, but I just wanted to say that. Next is approval of agenda. Reagan, do we have any changes tonight?
No changes there.
Thank you. Look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. We have no public communication tonight, so we'll go into our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Notice to all participants, that's also here in the room and online, pursuant to state law, RCW forty-two dot one seven A dot five 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 campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in Cine Hall and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting, is prohibited. Looking at the sign-in sheet, I have Jonathan Ingram wishing to speak tonight.
Thank you, Your Honor, and City Council. I will be brief. I wanted to thank everybody who came out to help with the last weekend's pet food drive. We were doing on record pace for the first two hours, and it just kind of dead-ended. So we came in about forty percent of our previous goal, of our previous alleys, so we'll be doing another drive at some point in the future, but I did want to say for everybody who can, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. For anybody else in the audience in present wishing to address council at this time? Is there anybody online wishing to address council at this time? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody raise their hand, there will be a second opportunity for public comment towards the end of our council meeting. Next up is approval of the consent agenda consisting of items C one through C seven. Motion to approve, some move?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda consisting of items C one through C seven. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Next, we'll move into reports of commissions. We will start with the Arts Commission, and is Patty? I don't see Patty on, oh, yeah, there she is. They're moving you over, Patty. Welcome, Patty. Thank you for joining us tonight. You were on mute.
All right, sorry about that. Hey, so it's good to see you all in place, and I have a very short update for you tonight. We met again this last month, and after taking care of some business, we talked about the Art Commission work plan. We finally finalized that, yay, we've been working on it for a while, and we just need to add a couple of Covington municipal codes, and then we'll be able to turn that over to whoever needs that. And we are also, we've also set a date for our commission retreat that has been many years overdue now. Getting everybody together over the summer is proving to be quite difficult, so we've currently set the tentative date to September eleventh. We are also finalizing everything for the rotating art program at CCP. We had the final contract, we're waiting for the final contractor specs before we can actually put the art call out on that, and we are also ready to go for the utility box art call, our next phase of that. Just waiting for some final specs on that as well. We have some really great plans for Covington Days and for Kids Art Fest, so you guys will be really happy about that. All those things are usually pretty popular with the, with the people that come, and that is about it. That is everything, and one last thing, we had a little bit of sad news. One of our commissioners, Jenny, has to resign her position on the Art Commission due to some family issues that she's going on, she's got going on, so we are still open for more commissioners. That's it.
Thank you, Patty. Does anybody have questions for Patty in the Arts Commission? No. Patty, thank you very much for joining us tonight. Thank you for a great update.
Thank you.
Have a great evening and a happy fourth.
Thanks, you too.
Next is Economic Development Council, Josh Lyons. Welcome.
Thank you. So nice to be here in person. Really excited about that. So speaking of commission retreats, we also, I believe, established ours, Reagan has preliminarily approved it for Hawaii in January.
Oh, nice.
Yes. So we appreciate the council's support on that. You guys discussed that after I leave. I should, I should tell everyone for the record, I'm joking, I've done, I've gotten in more, in trouble more than one time for joking and people taking that seriously. Just joking, no council retreat in Hawaii. Much of my report is really just a synopsis of what I reported on in our, when we met together for our joint meeting, but I'll, I'll just be brief. One, the biggest thing we're working on right now is our September fourteenth Business Symposium that we're hosting, and the reason we're doing so is we have a number of things we'd like to update our business leaders on. That would be business owners, but also some of the major property owners, business property owners, in particularly the downtown core. We're doing kind of an education initiative on the BNO tax. We're doing some SEPTED education around what the city's invested in and some of the resources that are available to businesses on that side of things. We're going to give a pretty significant development update, and then we're going to focus in on delivering a coherent message around the Clean Safe Welcome Initiative, and that's really in an effort to get some of our larger business leaders in terms of, you know, some of the bigger businesses that are mostly managed, some of the property owners, to really get on board and support us in moving in the direction of making Covington the cleanest, safest, most welcomed city in the state of Washington. So we're really excited to be hosting that. I think we're going to get really good participation, and so, you know, it's, it's not that far away, so that's really taking up a lot of our work. Besides that, we're really focusing, I mentioned at our last, the last time we met, that we, Cetus has really taken the welcome side of the Clean Safe Welcome Initiative and focusing in on how can we make Covington a really welcoming community as it relates to business. So we're working on that, particularly around the downtown core, as we know and continue to discuss the fact that it's going to have a significant other side of the business, side of things with Lake Point, which is great, that's not a bad thing, it just means that there's an opportunity for the downtown core to create a personality that is different than that of the new Lake Point development. We think that those are not competitors, they can be synergistic with one another, but we have to be intentional about that. So we're discussing that, which means that we're working on maybe thinking about creating a marketing co-op, particularly for the downtown core, which might be something like a downtown association or something related to like one, one cohesive voice around that sector to make sure that it continues to be as vibrant as the new Lake Point property, and that's, that's more than enough to keep us busy for a while.
Thank you, John. Council, any questions for John? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
For coming tonight, giving this report. Great to see you in person.
Yeah, great to see you guys. Happy to be here.
Have a happy fourth.
All right, you guys, too. Thanks.
Next is Equity, Cultural and Social Justice Commission, Bronwyn. Welcome.
This is new. So the biggest news we had was what you participated in. We had that proclamation, and then we were able to do some Facebook posts about it and did it, and that was interesting. I know if you had a chance to read the comments. You know, we had, we had all kinds, but I just love the fact that, you know, we had a place to get the, get the education out there. That was a happy thing. In the last meeting, we finally passed our strategic plan, and we are getting more honed in on the work plan for that. You will hear more about that in our joint meeting, and do I? Well, we're also getting ready for our Covington Days responsibilities. We don't really know what we're going to do, but we're really excited about it. We have created, well, not me, but Subcommittee has created a flyer that tells more about us, and we're going to do a couple of fun things, and have a contest to get people more involved and more engaged, and pretty much asking citizens, citizenry or the residents, what, what equity and inclusion is to them. We're just going to be asking that one. And we're also looking at more community outreach over the year and, and having more of a calendar, so we'll be working with the Facebook page and, and with our, utilizing our webpage to get more information about, you know, people in Covington, and then, of course, there's the survey, so we are going to be looking at that more and trying to get more, get that out more so that more people can participate in that. That's what we're doing.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Does anyone have any questions? Sean?
Yeah, Bronwyn, thanks. It's good to see you here on, when you go to Covington Days and you ask people what equity and inclusion is to them, I'm trying to think, you know, and I don't have the answer, but if there's information we can get from that that is helpful for us, if there's a way we can ask that question, you know, something to the effect of, and what can the council do or some, just, if there's a way that we can get information from them that's helpful for us, I think that'd be great, because if we're going to ask them, how can we use that to make this place more equitable and inclusive, so?
Okay, yeah, that's something that we can definitely talk more about during their joint meeting, and I will put that forth and have some of our people talk about it, because we all have little things to say, so you'll hear from all of us, but, yeah, that's a really good one, because, yeah, there. Our residents have, feel different ways about it, so we need to think of equitable and friendly way to get that out there, equitable.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. Have a very happy fourth.
Oh, thank you, and have a safe one.
Thank you. Next is Human Services Commission, and I saw Debbie Jacobson online. Welcome, Debbie.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for having me. So I am doing a quick change on my screen here real quick, so I can see what I'm doing. So our last meeting, we had a youth commissioner that didn't make it to our meeting in May. She had some transportation issues with the public transit that got her stuck somewhere, and so she was able to make it. The commission, one of the commissioners put together a schedule, and we're all going to take turns picking her up and taking her home to ensure that she's able to join us. She's wonderful, a wonderful young lady, great first impression. Samantha, you guys have all met her, of course, and then Polaris, we have our Polaris event coming up in September, it's going to be September tenth, and city staff confirmed that, so at that point, we had five agencies that had committed to it, the Congolese Integration Network Nexus with the YMCA that does a bunch of youth outreach, really important work, Washington Poison Control, One Love and Childcare Resources, and we haven't done a real big push yet, that was just with the initial opportunity sent out. We have a need survey that was put together that we wanted to utilize to gather information from that community, and it's being translated, and that should be done just about now, and we'll be sending that out to people in, in that housing development and collecting it to find out what kind of resources they see as needed in that community. We did put in all call-out to all the agencies that we have provided funding to give them the opportunity to come to this event, so it'll be interesting to see who does come, because many of them do say it's difficult to find opportunities to reach Covington residents. Let's see, we reviewed applications. It was our first night with a couple of new commissioners. We did have Finance Director Casey Parker, oh, Kathy, Kathy with the HR Department, she joined us, and then we had a new commissioner. Anyway, lots of new people this year, and listening in on this and participating, and it went very smoothly. We've got it down like a well-oiled machine on how to get through those things, and we're going to have ten applications next month, so it's a good thing we figured out how to handle this. The really great thing at this meeting was that Casey Parker was there and told us that we have a very large chunk of extra money that we're going to be able to put to these agencies that we weren't able to fund. We're so grateful for that money. We just, it's like Christmas for the next three years, basically, gives us another hundred thousand dollars that we're going to be able to give to agencies that we weren't able to fully fund before that we regretted, but felt it was the best thing, given the COVID situation, we had to focus our resources there. So the next two years, having that kind of extra funding is, it's amazing. And so that was basically it. The only last thing I would say is I cannot wait to talk to the commission about the new community care specialist. I was on the interviews this week and, or last week, and it was a very memorable experience. I've done a lot of interviews in my career, more than I can count, and it is in the top two most memorable experiences I've ever had, and a really interesting role, very interesting people, and it's really a privilege to be a part of it, and really want to also reiterate my gratitude for including the Human Services Commission in, in a decision of this nature, and giving us a voice. That's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Debbie. Does Council have any questions? Jennifer?
Hi, Debbie. I was just curious what time the event is at Polaris on the tenth?
Oh, it, I'm trying to remember the exact hours, but I believe it's eleven to two, and we'll be setting up at about ten AM.
Hi, Debbie, thanks for being here tonight. You said you have ten applications to go over next month. What's the grand total of applications you've had so far?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other question? Debbie, thank you very much for attending tonight, and have a very happy fourth, and I know that your commission's got a lot of work to do ahead of it, so.
Yeah, little light summer reading.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Have a wonderful evening.
You, too.
Thank you.
Next is Parks and Recreation Commission, and Laura Morrissey, welcome.
Hi there. So our last meeting, we heard from the Green River Coalition, they came and presented to us some of the work that they've been doing in Covington. They work in both private and private properties and public spaces, so a couple of the public spaces that are possibly more accessible or more utilized by Covington residents where they've been doing work are the Wingfield area and what they call the Jenkins Creek chimney area, we call it the Jenkins Creek Trail, kind of right by Real Life Church and Timberlane area. They've been doing a lot of invasives removal, really digging in there and getting out invasive plants that are taking over, a lot of blackberry removal, and they go beyond just taking out what's on the surface, they actually dig down and dig out the roots to make that removal as permanent as possible. They talked to us about the projects that they've been doing with the removals and how they're looking at the soils and the various steps that they are taking to try to return these areas back to native plants. They're filling a big hole of work and maintenance that they kind of bridge a gap between what the city can do maintenance-wise and then what they can do to take that one step further and try to return things to a more natural state. So it was very fascinating, very interesting to hear from them, a group of Green River students who are quite passionate about what they do, and you can tell that they take a lot of pride in their areas and their properties that they are in charge of maintaining. So I was grateful that they came out and spent time with us. They've put in quite a few hours to benefit the city. We also heard about the SoCo Park Phase One project update and the design preferences, so this is the same presentation that you're going to get as soon as reports are over, but I do want to share with you the commission's thoughts. This will make probably more sense to you after you see the presentation, but three options are going to be presented to you, and option three has an A and a B choice. The commission went with option three A as our recommendation. This option provides a large amount of pickleball courts. Just to give a little bit away in terms of having it all make sense, there was an option for a very small dog park, a sports court or a pickleball court, those are the three big ideas. The commission was concerned, even though there's a lot of support, especially on the commission, for a dog park, and it's unidentified as a community need, the size of dog park that we would be able to fit in SoCo would not fulfill a community's, our community's needs. It would be a very, very small dog park, and even those on the commission who were highly in support of a dog park were hesitant about using our area in that way. A sports court, the commission was in favor of, but also we've heard that sports courts can be a little bit of a challenge because they're striped for multiple sports, and then it becomes a question of, well, who gets to use it? You know, if you show up to play tennis and people are playing basketball, or if you show up to play pickleball and there's somebody playing tennis, it can cause conflicts and also potential noise issues. Pickleball courts are what we eventually landed on, dedicated pickleball courts for a couple of reasons. We opted for the six over the three, because you can actually program six pickleball courts. It's a sport that's rising in popularity. I did ask if it plummets in popularity as quick as it has risen, what can we do? Can we repurpose that court area easily? And the answer is that yes, we can. We can repurpose those into tennis courts quite easily and possibly something else with the, just a moderate amount of work. So that made me feel better about dedicating space to one sport in particular. The recommendation was unanimous from the commission with one abstention, one member who declined to vote at all. So just wanted to share with you kind of our thoughts behind that, and of course, you guys will have the same presentation and your own discussion. The next item on our agenda was a comprehensive plan update overview from Selena and Ryan as they take that on their roadshow to the commission, so we heard their information and had a conversation with them about various things that interested us, and then the last item on our agenda was just talking about this new remote in-person hybrid option that we have and how best to handle it as a commission. And just by way of note, due to commissioners' schedules and staff availability and agenda items, we have canceled our meeting for July, and we are combining our August and September meetings into one meeting on August thirty-first, so I will come back to you in September to report on that meeting, but you won't see me until then, so that is all that I have for you. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Council have any questions for Laura? Laura, thank you very much for a great report and have a very happy fourth.
Thank you. Have a great summer and see you guys later.
Thanks, Laura. Planning Commission, is Murray online? Oh, no report tonight. Okay. Thank you. Next is Youth Council, and I don't see anybody here. Is there anybody online from the Youth Council? Amelia, are you giving the report tonight? Or is it?
Okay. Can you guys see me?
Yes, welcome. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you guys for having me. So first off, I'll start off with, we had, we received a presentation on the comprehensive plan for Covington and their plans for 2044, and as a commission, we were all really interested in that because we thought about how in twenty, like twenty-four, we will be the adults of Covington, and so we all were pretty engaged in that, and it was pretty interesting hearing all of the growth that Covington is anticipating, and so that just kind of like got us thinking about some future plans. We received a presentation from a Coving, the Career, College and Career Specialist, yep, from Kent Meridian, and she presented this scholarship fundraiser that they're putting together and where they are going to sell these little like wooden hearts in memory of some, of this, of a student from KM who passed away recently, and so that was really interesting, because they were trying to see how we can help fundraise, and so we were definitely interested in that, and just kind of brainstorming ideas of how to get stuff rolling for that, but that won't, that won't be occurring until probably November, December, and planning will occur then, but it, we just kind of got the ball rolling on that. We also discussed a, how we're going to increase involvement in the community, because during COVID, a bunch of youth in Covington just stayed home, of course, quarantine, obviously, but we are trying to figure out how we're going to increase their kind, their overall like morale and involvement in our community, and so something that we've been really thinking on and really working upon is an art show, and we'd be working with the Kent High Schools and potentially, and most likely the middle schools as well, where we can put together an art show, and there'll be like a whole display at Kent Lake or Kent Wood. There's still a lot that we have to plan out, but we just kind of discussed that and any ideas we had and showed, and a lot of people showed interest in that, and so basically we just kind of brainstormed a little bit and get anything officially rolling, but we just kind of saw where everyone was at with that. And then we discussed our enroll, our involvement in the parade, and all of us were interested in that. Then we also canceled our July meeting due to some of our council members, our commissioners heading off to college and a lot of summer plans, and so our next meeting will then be in August, and I think that is the gist.
Great. What a great report, Amelia. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council have any questions? Well, thank you for that. That is a very energetic update. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for being here tonight and have a very happy fourth.
Yeah, of course, you, too.
Thank you. With that, we'll move into new business. New business item one is the SoCo Park Phase One Project Update and Design Preferences for Updating the Park Master Plan to Include the Two Newly Acquired Parcels. Ethan?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Earlier this year, the city completed a master planning process for SoCo Park. HBV Landscape Architects helped us with that process, and now we've kind of transitioned into designing Phase One, which will be constructed in 2023. So tonight, we have an update from HBV Landscape Architects. So tonight we have an update from HBV Landscape Architects. And there's also a, since we recently acquired two new properties for Soco Park. There's a question of how do we update our park master plan, given those two new parcels and. The Parks Commission Chair Laura just gave kind of a nice kind of preview as to the commission's recommendation on that. But we'll also get a presentation on what those options are and you'll be able to see what they look like. With that, I will hand it off to Juliette Vaughn with HBV Landscape Architects.
Jason, it is nice to see everybody and be here today. It's been a while since I've had to use a clicker, so we'll see if I can remember this. And we'll start the presentation for me in a minute here. The presentation itself is going to be stacked. There's a lot of information you will have already seen from previous presentations in the front. We do this for purposes of anybody in the audience. Or any council members who maybe weren't a part of that initial presentation. I'm gonna fly through it and I do mean fly so that we don't take time with things you've already heard. If you do need to stop, please do speak up and. And I'm happy to take some time to go through it in more detail. I feel like you sort of got to solve the mystery before the mystery is laid out in front of you. So we'll probably try and get to the discussion parts pretty quickly if you're here. There we go. Um, okay, so we all know we're looking at Soco Park. And its location across from town center. The existing park you can see follows along Jenkins Creek. I'm going to be calling north up for purpose of clarity and just ease of discussion. North is like directly kitty corner and it confuses us all all the time. So we're going to pretend north is up when I refer to east-west or directions on the plan. Jenkins Creek runs through what essentially is the south side part of the site. There is an extensive wetland buffer system that's basically contiguous with the creek system itself. And so that along with its buffers. Does heavily encumber the site in those environmental systems. It's also one of the elements that I think is more enjoyable. It really makes it feel like a very natural park. And what is going to be right across from your town center. And so that character is very important to the community as we learn through the master planning process. We evaluated the site and really looked at a number of different elements in, in the early portions of the master plan. Determine how to best use the site and what made the most sense. We also talked to a number of people through our outreach process and what type of vision and character with the identity they felt the park should be. And you can see photos and, and some of the words and the imagery that they used through that process. We developed three concepts, then narrowed it, reviewed those with the community, narrowed it down to a preferred master plan. Went back to the community to show them what that result was and got additional feedback. And then the final master plan was presented for approval. That final master plan does keep the development predominantly in the northern portion of the site. There is future improvements to carbon, to, I'm sorry, to Wax Road. That would be part of a long-term plan and then really just encroaching into that buffer for soft surface trails. Educational purposes, things that you want to do within the, within that natural environment. Lot of imagery for what it could look like in the future for those different programmatic opportunities. And some of the key considerations that we heard from the feedback in that outreach process. We of course have some limited funding for Phase One, so we looked at both what we're calling a base bid and additive alternate. So that gives us some flexibility, given the COVID climate and the volatility that we're seeing in the construction industry. We really are trying to be conservative and make sure we can mix and match some different opportunities to get the right kind of project. What we heard from both the council and the, the commission, the Parks Commission was a preference for trails over open space. So we use the trails through the natural system as our first additive alternate and the open space as the second. The primary elements being constructed, our intent is the ADA parking, which does have to be on-site. We cannot use this on streets in either the temporary or permanent condition. And then the sidewalk or the walking route along the corridor as well as some open space associated with it. From the image of what that could look like. And then that's what we took to the open house. We started wanting to get some more information at that master plan. To think about future improvements and in particular with the playground, with the character, with the different site features at that entry and the coordination to the town center. Lot of discussion about some of the community concerns, the programming and what that character should be. We had a great turnout. We had both a, a physical or a virtual meeting as well as an online survey. A significant number of, of responses to the survey and even more comments, which is, is like really unusual. Like people didn't just comment once, they actually wrote in multiple comments to provide some feedback. The majority of people were within the city and twenty-nine percent in walking distance of the park. So really core to this community. Some of their comments and concerns were safety, transient. Kind of more negative activities that might happen in a trail system, things you expect and we've experienced in a number of similar parks. How it's going to be maintained in the long term. And there were a number of comments with an interest in things that are not feasible within the park master plan as it was currently envisioned. And that was dog park, pickleball courts, splash pads and some basketball courts. So kind of more heavily programmed interests that I think are more indicative of citywide, citywide interests. We asked people more for character examples and showed them photo examples of type of play equipment, type of nature play. And you can see the responses were predominantly for more natural elements and even in the open spaces to keep it very natural and simple. All right, getting into the heart of the matter, these are the two additional sites that were a part of the recent acquisition. Based on the community feedback of what we received during the master plan, we wanted to look at the off-leash dog, pickleball, multi-sports court. It's a additional parking and this is what came out of things that we've heard that we weren't able to fit in the original master. So I'm going to quickly go through the options that you've heard about earlier. And showing in the red box is the additional acquisition site. Core to all of these is an expansion of the ADA only parking into a parking lot. We've designed it such that the initial parking stall that would be built as part of Phase One A becomes a drop-off area. As we are able to expand parking further to what we're now going to call East. And that you see in the parking configuration here. Then with the two new parcels, this shows the dog park option in the brown. And an expansion of the trail system into this new parcel is also part of all of these options. The wetland system continues, you can see it on the plan here as well as all the buffers associated it. So all of those same site constraints continue onto these two new parcels. The size, as was mentioned, is, is rather small. Denne Substation in Seattle is kind of one of the newest dog parks, which a lot of people are familiar with because it is in the heart of Seattle. You can see in the site, it is about the same size, a little bit less of the Denne Substation. The one that is more closer, that Summit Park, a lot of people are familiar with the dog park at Summit Park. You can see in this diagram, the red is the existing dog park area at Summit Park. And that tiny little circle that's white in the corner is the size of the dog park that we could fit on this property. So that was pretty eye-opening to the commission when we discussed that. It is just a small site with heavily influenced environmental system. And so a lot of discussion about whether that was a value to this particular park or not. All right, the second option is the multipurpose court. And you can see here different configurations of what fits in that multipurpose court. So we have a, how it would look with a tennis court if there was a net and the strapping for the tennis court. That same space would fit four pickleball courts, which allows the net to remain in place in the center. For the tennis and the pickleball would be then a temporary net that the users would come and bring and set up their portable net. Or if it gets used as a basketball court, the tennis net would have to come down and intentionally be used for basketball. The next option is option three. This is broken into a three A and a three B. Three A is a dedicated pickleball court. You can see we can fit six within the limitations of our site. And then the B option was to go back to three if we needed decided more parking was warranted on the site. So we go from about twenty stalls to about thirty-two to thirty-five stalls in this configuration. One of the things the commission did mention is that the additional parking did not. They didn't feel like it was the greatest value for the recreation based on versus the recreational use of the site in particular. Because the site is smaller, but also because you have future improvements with town center, on-street parking and other long-term parking opportunities. So this is our slight pause, one, so I can take a breath. And two, to get some feedback. If you have any questions, we do have a few more slides about our next steps beyond this. But we want to take a pause on this that shows all of the different options with some of the pros and cons.
I have a couple of questions. So just having lived through the whole CCP experience of multiple phases and having children and dropping them off and. Reagan, I've seen him there, he knows exactly probably what I'm about to say. So. As a resident that learned, that listened to all the residents out there, parking is really, really, really important to people. I know this doesn't have sports fields, but it's really important. So I'm not sure if I agree with less parking. That's just a comment, but my question is about this drop-off area. How can we ensure that that's truly a drop-off area and not a place where people illegally park? Design-wise.
Yeah, so at, at the time that the, the, the parking is converted from what's being installed in Phase One A into the larger parking lots. I think a couple of things you would likely do is we'd actually probably cut back the parking so that it visually could not be used as a head-in parking stall. So we reduce the size of that. We could use that extra space to actually transition the curb to more of a curbless condition. To facilitate ADA access in the drop-off zone and then through materials and striping and physically limiting the amount of space you could pull in to park. Should serve the purpose to be able to use that as drop-off and not actual parking.
And would it be one-way through the parking lot?
There would be an in and. Either an out or a turnaround to it. Like a, a small area to be able to kind of back in if there wasn't parking on the site. How do you like back out and get back out again? So the idea is an in and an out, but I don't know if it'd be one-way or two-way without some further study.
Yeah, I'm thinking again of our experience at CCP before we had that little roundabout in there. I mean, it's still, it's still honestly an issue where people are backing out while children are getting in and out of cars and they're backing out onto that main road. This will have even more traffic than that. And I think we should really, really look closely at. The flow before we start digging and laying cement. Because people get really creative when just trying to drop a kid and then go find parking on the street. They're going to drop their cooler, their dogs and their children. And then back out onto Wax Road. I mean, it's, yeah. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
So we have the, the breakdowns of what people were looking for of, you know, off-leash dog park, pickleball. Sports court, additional parking. What were those breakdowns actually? Like what was, was our percentage of these are like this options? Rank, you know, two votes higher or something to that. Do we have that or is that just?
No, these were the things that were mentioned as we were going through the master plan process and they didn't see these uses on the site. And so people mentioned them in comments or mentioned them as part of our discussions during the virtual open house. There's not really a, a voting amount because it wasn't specific as we went through those elements. We did ask a number of questions in our very initial survey. We had an earlier survey that sort of ranked and asked people to rank the importance of various types of recreational activities. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but we could provide them to you and those did rank some of these different sports opportunities.
Another follow-up question, and this, this could just be my ignorance on this. But the last time I heard about pickleball before this year, when we made it to state, the official state sport. Was when I was a kid and was going to someone's house for a Fourth of July party and said, oh, we have a pickleball court. Is pickleball really that popular in these days? This could be my ignorance, but.
It is, it is crazy. And it has been for probably the last maybe five to six years. I, I hear it in almost every community and every park. That I have worked in in the past five years as an interest. There is very few places where they can go where there's more than one or two pickleball courts. And they will literally travel up to Edmunds and Linwood to be able to come in groups and play pickleball.
Now, this is, this is another question and this could be when we have a community center like we've been talking about for years. Would that be a better use to have an indoor pickleball court because? It says this is Seattle, it rains three hundred and forty days a year. We're in the middle of one of those few routes where it doesn't. Would it be a better interest for us to not have an outdoor but an indoor? Or is that just one of those, you know, when we have, we have the outdoor, we can redo it for something else during those rainy times where people are playing indoors?
You could always shift the court to something else, but I will say if no one plays tennis in the rain because you physically can't, the, the ball just gets saturated. With a, with pickleball, you don't see people playing in heavy rain. You do see people still playing soon after a rain. Or even when it's slightly drizzled because they use a wiffle ball and a hard racket. So they don't have quite the same limitations. I will say for your rainier day sport versus whether you can do this indoors. It is kind of the same scenario with basketball or tennis or any other sport you put on, on a court surface. The, the need and demand for indoor gym space is almost always great because of the fact that it rains a lot and we can't be outside.
You're, you're talking to the guy whose kid was outside playing in a turnstile downpour, even lighting and stopping coming inside to play, from playing basketball. So. I understand playing in the rain. So I was just, I'm just curious, wanting to educate myself on this.
Yeah, I will also say, and this was discussed in the Parks Commission, that it has historically been a sport more interested by seniors. A lot of, because it is a smaller court, there's less running, it's a little less impact. So it has traditionally started as more of a senior or older generation sport. That has changed probably significantly in the last maybe two years as a lot more youth and, and as a multi-generational sport, particularly through COVID. It is easy to pick up, it's very inexpensive and you can kind of fit as modified in most driveways. So it's, I think that has contributed to the increase in the interest is because it is such an easily accessible sport.
Yeah, I appreciate all that. I'm excited to see that the pickleball courts. Joe on ESPN, actually professional pickleball.
They also have professional cornhole. That doesn't mean everything, I'm just saying.
So we could have a cornhole thing there too, but. No, I, I like that, thinking about that area and. I'm, I'm leaning toward three A and dedicating it there. And then we can see if it, if it like, or set up the. Demand drops off, then we can repurpose it for something else. But I, I definitely think there's the opportunities here. It's our state sport. There aren't that many courts in the area and people I'm hearing all over are calling this sport. So I think it, I think it'd be great. I wanted to go back and ask a couple of questions about. About you mentioned safety is one of the issues and these more natural parks in some of those trails. I really liked that aspect of it, but what design elements can we put in that improve public safety in there?
Yeah, in particular, one of the biggest things we've been doing as part of our Phase One improvements is looking at the vegetation. The canopy and being able to limp some of that canopy up. Right now, there's sort of three, like you can actually see like there's three dedicated parcels and a lot of vegetation that really blocks your sight in between them. So part of structuring what the Phase One A is, is to start alleviating some of that. Some of the grading we intend to do and the parking lot grading will help alleviate some of the blocking of the sightlines through. We also located the one play node very carefully on-site so that it would be visible from the road. And from those open spaces, our trail stays a little further away, both for environmental purposes. But making sure that there's some open lawn areas and we maximize those to be able to continue to see into those trails.
Yeah, I'll be curious as we go forward, what additional things. Part of me is wondering if there isn't any low-impact lighting we can put, especially at night or like we do with CCP that the park closes at certain times. So just something to think about. I'll have a, I guess, two more comments, since it looks like it, I, I agree that the dog park is probably too small for that. I think it's roughly maybe the size of this room or maybe a little bit bigger. So.
About, about, about two to three times the size of the room, but most dog parks are, are both sort of like acres. Thoroughly, and this is about a quarter of an acre of size.
So that, that, that helps. And I think, I think it. You need to revisit this because that's something we've heard for a long time and we need to find a place for a off-leash dog park. But I don't think this is the right spot for that. So I appreciate that. And then finally, dovetailing on what Jennifer said about the traffic. I would just encourage us to look at dedicated in and out. I know for, just for safety and getting fire engines and things possibly in there. They don't want to be fighting with people coming in and out. So if there's a dedicated in and out. It'll be easier for them to move their big trucks through too. So that's just what I would say. So thank you, Christina.
Thank you. I'm just going to assume that we're applying septic principles to this design. And, and so, oh, to go on the record, um, it's two feet, no higher than two feet off the ground. And, and so, oh, to go on the record, um, it's two feet, no higher than two feet off the ground and no lower than six feet canopy. So that the visibility is quite phenomenal and then obviously lighting. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I appreciate the information and I think that the feedback from the commission was fantastic. I would, I feel like we're looking at two different time periods and, right? And so whilst maybe this large dog park is not appropriate for this location, I could certainly see as we get increased density in the downtown area, people may want a place where they can take them, let their doggies off and let the peppers go potty and go for a little run because they're probably going to be living in apartments or, so that necessarily may not be a need here now. But I think it might be helpful to keep that in mind later. And I think to the point of, you know, what if pickleball falls out of fashion? Or we end up getting a, a community or activity center right across the street, right? Can we look at as the needs of the city and the residents in that specific area change over time? That we are open to the idea of making, making it so that modifications could be more easily done so that we can, we can grow and change with whatever the needs are of the community and not just think that once it's done, that's what it is. Because it fits us now. That'd be the only consideration I would ask. And of course, the safety, things that we discussed.
Yeah, I can tell you also just for safety, we do have certified SEPTED specialists on our team. So that is something we always take really care. And I could talk for a long time on it, but I appreciate those comments. Um, we, based on the discussion with the Parks Commission as well, we've kind of looked at the configuration of the six pickleball and made sure, and I think we would continue to do this in the future, that you could actually re stripe it for two tennis courts fairly easily. That's the easiest transition because it's a similar surfacing. You can always re stripe it for basketball or something else. Removing it to create a dog park in the future, I think, again, this is long-term vision. A master plan is also like a twenty plus years vision sometimes. So I think rethinking what that potentially could be, how much parking, how the parking circulates would all be part of, I think, more detailed design with that future phase. But at that point, if those desires change, I could see some flexibility in the design to make sure we can accommodate some changes in the future.
Anybody else? Thank you. Ethan, do you need any, or are you done?
I do have a couple more. I will, I will go very quickly. This was the more important element. But we just wanted to kind of highlight the timeline and highlight also the next time we go to the Parks Mission. We should hopefully have the results of the grant process that's currently underway, which would go towards the next phase of construction. And then just so you have it, you can look at later some of the detail of the final, final elements of the, the phase one A. And that is all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Ethan?
Yeah, I will say while there's no, we're not asking for any action from council tonight. We are looking for kind of consensus or direction from council on which option to proceed with. We're updating the master plan so we can bring it back to council for adoption at a future time.
What is council consensus? What would you like to see?
Yes, I guess I just have a qualifying question before we go to that. Options, option three A seems to be the one that the commission liked the best, but options three B, what is the dimensions of that court? What would that be if that was one we went with? I just, what are those dimensions of the?
Of the six court option versus the three court option with more parking? Um, I can tell you a tennis court would still fit in the three court option. We'd have to make it a little bit wider to make that happen, but it would not significantly affect the rest of the design. Um, I don't know those numbers off the top of my head.
Ethan, and maybe just to add a couple of things for consideration. And it was mentioned, but as far as the, the difference between a six, six court pickleball court option and like a three court pickleball option or a sports court with pickleball options is that from a programming standpoint, like if we wanted to run a league or tournaments or things like that, you could do that with the six court option. Anything less than that, you probably really wouldn't be able to run a successful program. So as staff from the recreation side of things are hearing demand for tournaments or even groups wanting to hold their own tournaments or leagues and things like that, that is an important consideration to consider. Other than that, I think you probably heard a lot of information on the options, but happy to answer any questions.
Thanks Ethan, Jennifer.
To confirm the, if we chose three A or three B, the pickleball courts would be part of phase one, correct?
No, they would not.
They would, okay.
They'd be part of a future phase.
So we're talking a long time for these pickleball.
We're talking about a direction to be able to update the master plan so that we show the appropriate programmatic uses for that future, those future phases.
Thank you.
So with that in mind, since the ways I would recommend that we go with the larger number of pickleball courts because we can always shrink that if in the future we see that the demand is not there. So that's, I would say, let's go with three A, look at that. And then you can always adjust it in the future if the bottom falls out of the pickleball market. So.
Your council consensus for three A? Thumbs up for three A? Five one for three A.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for a great presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, next up is new business item number two. Discuss the budget and work plan for South King Housing and Homelessness Partners. And that Daphne? Or Angela?
Angela San Filippo will be promoted.
I'm used to seeing both screens, so I'm sorry. Angela, welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you so much for having me. For the record, Angela San Filippo, Executive Manager of Skip, South King Housing and Homelessness Partners. I do have a presentation for you to walk through the Skip twenty twenty-three work plan and budget. So go ahead and share my screen. Just one second. So as I go through this, I am going to first provide a brief update. It's really great to be here with you again. And I wanted to review some of the work that we've been doing these last couple of years and work that we are continuing this year. And as I get into that, just to ground us in Skip's overarching mission and some of our objectives that really guide our work. So Skip's mission is to work together to create a coordinated, comprehensive and equitable approach to increasing housing stability, reducing homelessness and producing and preserving affordable housing in South King County. In order to achieve that mission, we have identified three overarching objectives. These include sharing technical information and resources that promote sound housing policy and planning across South King County. It also includes coordinating public resources to attract greater private and public investment into affordable housing in South King County. And then finally, providing a unified voice for advocacy for South King County needs at a local, regional and state level as well as providing education and outreach opportunities to our partners and broader stakeholder groups and community members. This is a very brief kind of highlight of the work conducted last year. And this includes appointment of our inaugural advisory board. These are community members that are deeply connected to South King County, specifically around housing and homelessness issues that help to inform the Skip Executive Board decisions and make sure they're really grounded in community voice. We also moved forward with establishing a Skip Foundation. This is a fundraising arm for Skip and we received Washington nonprofit status for the Skip Foundation. We also set up the Skip Housing Capital Fund. Nine of our member cities adopted an interlocal agreement to provide a mechanism to pool sales tax credit funds that are the seeding funding source of that capital fund. In twenty twenty-one, we really worked hard at the executive board lettable on drafting funding guidelines. And then our advisory board this year worked on our twenty twenty-two funding priorities. And those were just adopt, adopted earlier this month. We also established administrative procedures. This is really the behind the scenes nitty gritty of how this fund is going to be managed by both Skip staff as well as the City of Auburn Finance Department and really reaching agreement on those procedures and tracking so that we're setting ourselves up for success. We also supported six of our partner jurisdictions through their housing action plan development and adoption last year. And in terms of advocacy, we adopt both state and federal legislative priorities that help us to build consensus and agreement of legislative priorities for South King County partner jurisdictions. And then towards the end of the year, we were awarded Department of Commerce funds through housing action plan implementation grants. Five of our Skip partners banded together in a collaborative effort to apply for funds for those housing action plan implementation funds to inventory and the regulated and unregulated affordable housing across South King County. Really helping us to better understand the housing stock and inform affordable housing or housing stability policies in the future. A little bit about the work that we are doing in twenty twenty-two. So we are with the adoption of our funding guidelines and priorities. We're executing our first round of funding from the Skip Housing Capital Fund. So we'll be accepting applications this summer and the executive board will be reaching a recommendation towards the end of the year that will come back to our partner councils for final approval in the beginning of twenty twenty-three. Continuing to build funding support and thinking about how we can leverage those public funds. This includes moving forward, as I said, we receive Washington nonprofit status, but we are pursuing five oh one C three status through the federal government as well, making sure that we can really qualify for as many grant opportunities as possible. And then continuing our relationship building and outreach with our philanthropic organizations across the region. Really taking advantage of some of the opportunities that might be available to leverage private investment with those public resources. We also continue to convene a group of South King County joint planners and developers. This is a group of affordable housing developers as well as city and county human service and land use planners. Really providing a space for collaboration to better understand the barriers to increasing affordable housing construction and preservation. We've also conducted an inventory and assessment of existing housing policies across South King County. So this is really a mechanism to, as I identified, really share technical information and resources across our partner jurisdictions in terms of what types of housing policies are in place in South King County as well as across the region that we can really learn from best practices, what's been working and what hasn't been working. And then the Department of Commerce Grant Funds that I said, stated were awarded towards the end of twenty twenty-one. We've really kicked off that work in the last couple of months, bringing a consultant onboard to help us with this work to inventory and monitor affordable housing. As I said, both regulated and unregulated. And those are really vulnerable to market pressures and help us to better understand the affordable housing stock across the region. And the latter part of this year, we'll also be working on establishing three to five year goals and objectives with both our advisory board and executive board. This will also include thinking about now that we have been operational for a couple of years. What are our performance measures and tracking that we really want to be reporting out and showing progress and to our partners as well as just making sure that we are working towards that overarching vision that I mentioned earlier. Now I'll get into our work plan for twenty twenty-three. And this is really just an overview of our work plan process. Our work plan as well as our budget is developed by both our staff work group and advisory board as well as our executive board. And once we have a draft in place, we go out and review our work plan and seek input from our partner councils. And that's really what brings me here tonight is to review the work plan and hear any input or questions that you might have before it is brought back before our executive board for adoption in August. And then in fall and winter, it is consistent with our interlocal agreement. It is brought forward to our partner councils for final approval and adoption. The work plan organization that was in your packet, you'll see, has been broken up into five goal statements. And each of the goal statements has work items that are identified as critical, important or desirable. This type of prioritization really helps staff to be flexible and adapt to emerging issues as well as reflect the fact that currently Skip only has one staff person and we're looking to replace the program coordinator position. So just needing to be reflective of what our capacity is and being able to adapt our work plan into the future as that may change. The first school area is really around defining strategy and direction. Going to go through these pretty quick so I can open it up for questions, but this includes some administrative tasks that are part of our interlocal agreement, but it also includes developing a long-term funding strategy for a housing capital fund. Really important part of our work around pooling public resources and also attracting greater private investment. Really making sure that we are exploring and identifying dedicated sources of revenue for those funds. And so we're building that fund out for sustainability into the future. The second goal area, kind of tagging on to that, building long-term stability and sustainability of the Skip Housing Capital Fund. So under the critical items, you'll see, these are really important areas to fully execute the twenty twenty-two funding round. They include working through our partner councils for final approval at the beginning of twenty twenty-three as well as preparing contract documents and monitoring and tracking all of the projects that would be funded for consistency with the requirements and for progress moving forward. Some of the important items really include collaborating with our other public funders at the state and local levels. This is really important as our capital fund. While it's the first housing capital fund in South King County and the first opportunity to really establish a subregional fund and leverage resources into South King County, it doesn't amount to a whole lot when you look at the overarching cost of a affordable housing development. So it's really important that we are collaborating and aligning with other public funders to really maximize those resources. And this also includes similarly on the same vein, coordinating with private investors and really thinking about how to leverage those funds and increase the private investment into South King County as well. And then it also includes as we look forward, building out a pipeline of projects. So we likely will hopefully get a lot of applications, a lot of great applications. And but thinking through if we aren't able to fund all of those, how do we build a pipeline of projects to be funded over the next five years and work with both our partner councils and staff as well as the developers to ensure that there's success and there's a pipeline of projects to move forward in South King County. The third area of work is really thinking about enhancing and developing local policies and programs that protect affordable housing stock and provide housing security. This includes regular updates to both the housing policy matrix that I talked about as a technical resource to staff as well as the affordable housing database that we'll be working on this year. So regular updates to those are going to be critical to ensuring that they are the most useful to our partner jurisdictions moving forward. And that requires, you know, regular staff input and resources as well. We also convene a group of city and county land use planners that share out best practices and increase coordination and collaboration on housing policy and planning. This is an important part of the work identified in twenty twenty-three and really into twenty twenty-four. And as those land use planners are working on housing action plan implementation as well as their comprehensive plan development and specifically around the housing elements. Another critical part of this work is to support efforts by the Affordable Housing Commission at the King County level to advance their five-year action plan. There's a lot of alignment with the goals and vision of the Affordable Housing Committee at the King County level with the goals and mission of Skip. So it's important to us that we both think about how we can leverage each other's work, but we're also not. So it's important to us that we both think about how we can leverage each other's work, but we're also not duplicating efforts. So really important coordination piece there. And then the other piece here is really building on that affordable housing database and thinking about how we can develop a program to assist our member cities with administering local housing programs. So things like M F T E or density bonus programs, programs across South King County where there may be efficiencies in centralizing some of that reporting or tracking and how we can really assist our member cities in developing a program to do that. Now we're getting into the kind of outreach advocacy component of our work. We have a goal around representing South King County and our unique affordable housing needs. This includes Skip staff, really representing Skip and South King County at regional meetings and forums. These include, I sit on the staff work groups, the Affordable Housing Committee that I talked about. I also work closely with P S R C and sit on their Regional Transit Oriented Development Committee. And so things like that that really represent South King County and Skip at both local and regional tables. This also includes the state and federal legislative priorities that I talked about and building relationships with both our state and federal legislators and thinking about organizing work sessions and providing more regular progress updates on the work of Skip. Lastly, this is our education piece and our goal is around further strengthening our regional stakeholder understanding of the spectrum of affordable housing options. So we coordinate throughout the year with housing organizations and other stakeholder groups to provide education and engagement opportunities for a broader audience of elected officials and community members. We also coordinate monthly Skip Executive Board educational topics. This is really to keep our executive board as informed as possible on emerging issues or recent data that informs our work. We also provide annual updates to our non-South King County cities and other relevant stakeholder groups to keep them apprised of our work. And then the only area that you'll see as desirable as part of this work is an area that really would be nice to get to, but it will be dependent on staff capacity. And this is really thinking about that joint planners and developers group that I talked about earlier. The participation in that group does ebb and flow throughout the year and throughout, you know, multiple years and really thinking about how we can reinvigorate and reimagine that group so that it is the most effective and beneficial to all members who participate. And that would be working with the Housing Development Consortium, really has very direct connection and ties to the affordable housing development community. And lastly, touching on the draft two thousand and twenty-three Skip budget. So we do have a draft budget that is in your packet. The overarching goal of our budget is consistent with the goal of our previous budget, which is to increase our jurisdiction contributions incrementally while spending down some cost savings that occurred during our first year of operation when staff had not come on board as early as we thought and there were some cost savings. That has enabled us to, like I said, just incrementally increase contributions and help us to work towards a balanced budget over the next few years. So the budget with those incremental increases and spending down some of our cost savings, it includes two full-time positions, an executive manager and a program coordinator. It also includes a line item for compensating our advisory board members. We do not currently compensate our advisory board members, but we have recognized through best practice research and outreach that if we do want to reach out to folks that are the most impacted by affordable housing and homelessness and really incorporating their voice into our process. But best practices really show that it's important to decrease the barriers to participation and compensate them for their time and effort to participating. And then it also includes legal services and other professional services for fully executing the Housing Capital Fund contracts. So with that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and I am happy to address any questions that you might have or take suggestions that you have to incorporate into either the work plan or the budget.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Beth?
Hi Angela. Just a quick question, then when you were talking about goal number three, part of that was to protect existing affordable housing stock. What, how do you envision that playing out? Because I'm hearing more and more about the only option is to build more. What does that look like?
Yeah, I think that's a really good question and it's particularly important in South King County where we have a diminishing affordable housing, existing affordable housing stock because of market pressure. So that might look like acquiring existing buildings. So using either public or private funds or a combination of that to buy an existing building or rehab an existing building. But because we're using those public funds, it may come with an affordability requirement so that that housing is kept affordable. So something to that effect. I think acquisition is a pretty popular example of ensuring that we maintain affordable housing that may have existing affordability requirements that might be expiring. So tax credits that were originally part of the project but have an affordability requirement that might be expiring. So it would be otherwise lost to the private market. But we can also think about acquisition opportunities that don't currently have affordable housing requirements that are kind of a naturally occurring building and thinking about investing in those and creating a public benefit of that affordability requirement.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else have questions for Angela?
Angela, thank you for your wonderful presentation. I was trying to catch the amount as you spoke. But maybe, maybe I'm off. Can you tell me how many positions are covered under the salaries? I thought it was four that I pointed.
There's two staff positions at Skip that are covered under Skip's operating budget.
Okay, and is the executive board, not the executive manager, but is the executive board compensated for their time?
They are not. Our executive board are made up of representatives from each of our partner jurisdictions. So they are either elected officials or staff from each of our partner jurisdictions.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, hello Angela. Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. It was great. I guess a question I have and appreciate the work plan. When do you anticipate that we'll actually see on the ground, you know, affordable housing or new housing developments as a result of Skip's work?
That's a good question. I wish I had a very specific answer. We are going to be conducting, as I said, our first funding rounds. We'll be receiving applications for affordable housing projects this summer. I think after we see those applications, we'll have a little bit better idea of what the timeline might be. I know our executive board has indicated great interest in projects that are able to move forward fairly quickly, which likely means they have either funding committed already or other funding sources, you know, already secured. So that that is definitely part of our application process and kind of priority setting. But I would have a better idea, you know, it does take a while once you get your funding in place to actually build a project. But we'll have a little bit better idea after we receive those applications and see what type of developments we're getting interest in based on our Housing Capital Fund and application process.
Great, well, that's, that's good to know that it's starting this summer. So at least the ball's rolling. Just a couple of additional comments. Is Skip considering, along with, you know, building additional housing and protecting current housing stock? What's something San Francisco is doing, which is subsidizing housing? As in basically giving people three hundred thousand dollars, let's say, to purchase a house. And what happens then is they get that equity, they'll, you know, continue to grow. And when they sell it, they got to pay back the three hundred thousand, but they're actually living in a house. So that's one way to get around this. You know, the prices are going up. Just create a fund that subsidizes to buy houses that are currently built. So I'm just wondering if there's been any discussion about that. Then I had one more comment.
At this point, we haven't had discussions around creating our own program specific to Skip, to Skip. But we have included homeownership as a priority within that Housing Capital Fund. But because of our size and the administrative burden of creating a program like that ourselves, we would be looking at partnering with existing organizations. So some of those in our area would be community land trusts or Habitat for Humanity that focus on homeownership opportunities and utilizing their existing system and providing funding. If they were to kind of apply for and have a project that they're applying for a Housing Capital Fund, we wouldn't be creating our own program, at least not at this time with the capacity that we have.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I did with that understanding, I would just add that to the mix of things that we can do and encourage, you know, your partners and whoever else, that that is an option. Another way to spend the funds and get people into appropriate housing, I guess. And then the last thing about the compensating the advisory board, I work for ecology and that is something we're starting to talk about is how do we compensate or reimburse people for costs that may be a hurdle for them to participate in the process. So things like providing potential reimbursement for daycare or mileage. So it's not out of the realm of possibilities, but that's something that other state agencies are starting to look at doing as well. That's it.
Anybody else? I have one question, Angela. Concerning the advisory board compensation for fourteen thousand four hundred, how many people is on the advisory board that you're looking at compensating with that amount?
Yeah, currently our advisory board has twelve members and in our local agreement identifies up to fifteen. And so we don't have a structure in place yet. This is a topic of discussion for our executive board at their next meeting. But one of the things that has come up is ensuring that we aren't compensating folks who are already compensated for being there. We do have a variety of organizations represented. But these would be individuals that would really benefit from the compensation, right? To remove the barriers, as was mentioned earlier. So it would likely not be all of the members. That fourteen thousand is kind of a placeholder based on the maximum potential amount that might be paid out based on having fifteen advisory board members. So it's an estimate.
So basically less than a thousand dollars a year?
Yes, correct. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Before us tonight, thank you Angela very much. Of course, tonight council is a potential motion to continue funding Skip at the level of nine thousand nine hundred and nineteen for the two thousand twenty-three funding cycle as well as improve the work plan. Council was to take action tonight.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to continue funding Skip at the level of nine thousand nine hundred and nineteen. Sean, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. And Angela, again, I appreciate the update about Skip's progress and future work plans. I'm excited about the potential for us to actually start seeing projects being developed and initiated. So I'm supportive of continuing our investment in this. And look forward, I guess, to next year's presentation when we'll have an update on actual people being moved into some of these affordable options. So, thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Jennifer would like to speak to your second.
The, the work that Skip is doing is important for those of us with responsibilities towards residents living in South King County. And so while I know it's not quick and not as, you know, moving as as quickly as we would, we would probably all like, it's important to stick with it, especially based on, you know, the honestly small amount of money we are investing. There is the potential for a big bang for our buck. And I, I think it's worth it to, to, to help the seed grow. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Does anybody else wish to speak for against the motion? Joe?
So because we're voting on the budget for Skip, I will be voting no. And my only reason for voting no, and Angela knows this because I harped on it at our last meeting, and I felt bad. I had to leave the meeting early and I know people were harping back at me on that. So I do feel bad. But it's the fourteen thousand four hundred dollars for compensation to advisory board. I am a full, I'm a firm believer in volunteerism. I'm a firm believer that if you want to make the system better for yourself, for your future, volunteering is a great way to go. You should, and the only thing you should be expecting back is the gratitude of people that you've helped make things better for. Fourteen thousand four hundred dollars, we gave that to our Human Services Committee would be able to fund an additional agency. Yes, we're giving them a lot more money than that because of ARPA funds now, but if we didn't have the ARPA funds, we just said, hey, here's an extra fourteen thousand four hundred dollars. Instead of the fifteen organizations that they were able to fund, that's a sixteenth organization or that's additional money and rent, rent subsidies that they can help with. I'm a firm, I believe that that's what that fourteen thousand four hundred dollars should be doing is helping people in need for rent assistance. It doesn't mean we're paying your full rent for a month. It means we're giving you a couple. If you're a hundred dollars short on rent, here's a hundred dollars that we can help you with. Or if you need extra money to get gas, you can go to something. We're helping the people in these places that we can beat, that we're building these portable houses, that they can get to work so they can make their, make money to get out of their situation, to make better lives for their, for their families. I'm a firm believer that if you pay for volunteers, they're no longer volunteers. They are now staff. And that's the way they're going to consider it because that's their job. I want you to consider it that your job, but I want you to also consider that the only thing you need out of that is the gratitude of people, your family and the people you're helping to get out of that situation. Other than that, I have no problem funding Skip with the nine thousand dollars that we're doing because that's a small amount. But because of that one line item, can't vote yes on this.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else wish to speak for again? Yes, Beth?
Yeah, thank you. I, I respect council members' and my most position on that. I guess I think the one thing that we can all look to ourselves though is that we get compensated as being council members. And if we're doing that, certainly somebody who might, I, I understand the equity piece where we're looking at that and that some people, the people that we're trying to get their opinions on and try to figure out their view, they're probably the least likely to be able to make a meeting. And maybe it's bus transportation or whatnot. And so a stipend to help them get there, be there, be part of it, I think is important as long as it's being equitably distributed. And it sounds like, it sounds like there is, it's not going to go to every single one, only the ones that need it. And I, I appreciate it not just being a blanket blanket payment. I would support this work plan and budget, although I will also say, as I always do cautiously, just to ensure that we monitor every year and make sure that it's actually benefiting the Covington residents because they are our first priority. Even though we do need to be working collaboratively in the region. So I would be curious to find out more about the selection process, the criteria and if there's any priorities given to cities that don't already have this type of resource. But that's another conversation.
I, I have had the opportunity of sitting in on several Skip's meetings and Skip has been around for several years now. I am very excited to hear that there is potentially something in the pipeline. I am disappointed to see how the funds have been distributed and that there is not anything in the pipeline currently. And come December or moving forward, I will not be voting yay if there isn't actually something in the world. In the works where we can see the fruit of our labor. Nine thousand dollars is not a lot. It's the principle of the matter. I keep hearing that where there's a potential project, a potential project, and I'm not negative on many things, but. But I do wish we would have seen something for our investments. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak for against motion? Been moved and seconded to continue funding skip. At the level of nine thousand nine hundred nineteen dollars for the two thousand twenty-three funding cycle as well as approved the work plan. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
The motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Angela, for being here tonight, and thanks for a great presentation.
Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.
Hey, council, next is new business item number three. I am going to call an executive session. Before we discuss new business item number three. And the executive session is to evaluate the qualifications of a candidate for appointment. To elective office pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero subsection one subsection H. For approximately ten minutes. Let's make it twelve minutes where we will come back at eight forty-five. Thank you. And Regan, if you could join us. Thank you, everybody, for indulging us during our executive session. We are back in session to our. Covington City Council meeting for June twenty-eighth. We are on to new business item number three. At five o'clock. This afternoon, we did interviews of five. Candidates to fill. To possibly fill. An appointment. For council position number three from a vacancy that happened back in April. And the way this will work tonight. Is. The process is I will call for nominations. From the council. And a second is not needed for this appointment. Once I have all the nominations, I will call for. A statement from the council member as to why they are choosing that person. And then once all of those statements have been made, then I will call for a vote. And we will go down the line. And once a candidate gets four votes, then all voting will stop because that will give the majority needed. So with that, I am looking for nominations from council for position number three. Jennifer.
I would like to nominate Debbie Hartsock.
Thank you. Is there any other nominations from the council at this time? Joe?
I'd like to nominate Mark Lanza.
Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Jonathan Ingram.
Any other nominations? All right. Jennifer, do you like to speak to your motion?
I would. So this was pretty difficult because, you know, as we heard. Many of our applicants clearly have a connection to the needs of the city and serve the city and have a pulse on. What's near and dear to our residents. But for me, it comes to Debbie because of. She planned her life essentially around serving the community. That's. That speaks to her core. She has deep roots in Covington and. Especially her connection to our most vulnerable residents. I think that that's that. That's her standout.
Thank you. Joe would like to speak to your nomination.
Yes. First, I want to say thank you to all of the applicants. It was of all the meetings we've had where we've had interviews for applicants for any type of application. This was by far my favorite one. I think we had some wonderful answers. We had some wonderful ideas. And I'm going to tell you, I'm going to steal each and every one of your ideas. For the simple fact of I think they can work. And so I will steal them and make them my own. I do apologize for that in advance, but when they work, I won't apologize. I want to. Mark has served on our in our community before. He has a reputation of. Stating the hard facts. He has a reputation of making sure that we all understand what we're doing. We may not like sometimes how he gets on to us about it, but he gets on to us and we see that point. We want to work collaboratively and understanding that that collaboration is something that I believe this community wants from us. I also believe that our community wants someone in this position that. Is going to be able to chump headfirst. All of our candidates are able to jump headfirst into this, but I believe Mark. Has that extra ability. Plus his new his ideas for the community center of not being just an area where we go. For sports and recreation, but an area we can go. For helping on rent assistance, for helping on mental health services, or finding services that may not be offered right away, but where you can find those services. I think those are good. Ways that we can go. I also believe that. Some of the, some of his new ideas, especially saying that everything will revolve around a robust economy. Because that's what helps get these programs going is where we should really be looking at. And I, I think that's. Honestly, the way we should go. One more thing, I want to add this. No matter who's selected here today, I appreciate you. If you are not selected today, we have many commissions that I want you all to serve on. Because I think they would be, you would add so much to them. So I think, I thank you to the three who are here, to the two who aren't here, I would also say they should, I want them on a commission tomorrow. We have plenty of openings. So. With that, again, I thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Beth would just like to speak to your. Motion.
Nomination, yes. First of all, I. I want to say thank you to everybody that showed up and interviewed. The whole panel was fantastic. And quite frankly, if a lightning came and struck all of us down, God forbid, and you all five stepped in. I think you would do a fantastic job because you all bring something different to the table. I think one of the things that stood out for me. Is that. Jonathan doesn't have a lot of current experience based on his planning commission experience. And knows exactly what's going on. At a very intimate level on some of the key things that are going to be facing the city. And that's the primary reason. For nominating.
Thank you, Beth. All right, I will call for nominations. The way it works is we have three, whoever gets. Four votes first, and if it's. Not, then the lowest vote getter would be eliminated, then we vote on the top two. So all those in favor of Debbie Hartsock as our new council member, raise your hand. Debbie, congratulations. Jonathan, Mark, and Lori and. Andrea, thank you very much for applying. And. We really appreciate it. Debbie. Reach out to Regan and Krista. And they will get you set up. They will give, Regan gives a great orientation.
Don't know if I got mine still yet.
Yes, Mark. I will allow it.
Thank you all. Perfect. And. I truly believe you made the right decision. I really believe that. Debbie, you're enthusiastic, you're wild, you're passionate for the city. Not just in what you said, but in. You are going to be in very vibrant, positive energy.
So congratulations, Debbie. I should have, I should have warned everybody before they did the interviews. They're going to sit here next to me. No, no, it's just, I'm just here to answer questions if needed. And if you don't like my answer, Jennifer's right on the other side. All right. Thank you all. And thank you, everybody who applied and came for the interviews tonight. Thank you. That brings us next to future agenda items. Looking at July fourteenth. Is our joint session at six o'clock with the Equity, Culture and Social Justice Commission. And the council meeting on the fourteenth. And then. Don't forget. Pardon? Is it?
Mayor, I will make a correction.
Yeah, it should be.
The date should be July.
I know, because it's my birthday.
Covington days is that weekend, so.
Yeah, and it was the fourteenth.
Okay. Council have anything else they'd like to see on a future agenda? Sean?
Not so much that it has to be on this next one, but I recently met with the. American Association for the Advancement of Science. They have a guide for. City and local governments related to PFOS. And for those that don't know, PFOS is a chemical that's used in just about everything that we come in contact with. It's water repellent, grease resistant, heating resistant. It's in carpets, it's in firefighting foam, it's in our jackets. Anyway. Gets into the water and the EPA just came out with health advisories levels for it. Standards that eventually you'll have to get to. Normal health advisories or parts per million, things like this. These are parts per trillion that are toxic to us. So you're talking. One or two drops in an Olympic sized pool makes that water undrinkable. So this stuff is is. Deadly toxic. So they'd be willing to become, be part of a. Public communication, I think, at some point and just spend maybe ten fifteen minutes at the beginning talking to us about. What local governments can do related to PFOS. So it doesn't have to be on the next one, but I'd just like to put that out there. I can coordinate and see if we can get them on the agenda, so.
Would that, is there counsel consensus?
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Because, okay, because does that get covered under the NPDES?
No, it's not a regulated chemical right now. EPA is looking at it. So, but yeah, it's not, it's just that it's not regulated.
So since there's council consensus, we can bring it back at a future.
I'll tell you.
This fall or something to bring up. Our agenda for June or for July twelve. Looks like it might be pretty big. We're going to have our citizens here and honorates in the year. Any other updates? That council would like to see in the future? Okay. Let's move into council staff comments. Let's start with Adam. So is. Am I reading that nameplate correctly?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Okay, I'm sorry, but.
I've been wanting to say something, but I waited until right now.
So go ahead. So the record states that Adam Easterbrook is our new Covington Chief of Police.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm impressed you can read that part because I can't. I can barely read yours, so I, I need to get my eyes checked, I think.
I see things.
So just to give you a little update on the Fourth of July response, that we were trying to do a little bit of proactive stuff. We're going to be reaching out to some of the. More grievous offenders on fireworks. We're going to go door to door to the probably top five or ten knock, inform them of. The consequences of lighting off fireworks. And try to prevent some of the problem. We are not going to have staffing. I've been putting out an attempt to get extra staffing. And I can't even meet minimums, so. We will not have enough people to respond to the fireworks calls that are in excess of any other regular call. So. We're going to try to do some prevention and hopefully. Maybe it'll be a miracle and someone will decide they want to work on the fourth. Really difficult, but probably not going to happen. The second is the community care specialist. We did interviews for that. I'm really excited over the person we chose. And really looking forward to working with them. And I think that's all I've got.
Thank you, Adam, and congratulations again. Great decision by somebody who made that. I just, council have any questions for Adam? Beth?
Is there anything we can do to help? Support you on the Fourth of July? I know that we're not officers.
Um, no, I I don't think so. I mean, just kind of getting the word out is probably the best that we can do. I mean, maybe we can get the county to deputize you for the evening and then you can go out and write tickets and things like that.
Give everybody a hug.
Yeah, that might work too. So I I don't, yeah, I think just getting the word out is probably the best thing we can.
I could show up on that door. Oh, sorry. Ethan?
No comments tonight. Have a happy Fourth.
Thanks, Ethan. Dawn still, yes, Dawn. You're on mute, sir.
Nothing, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Selena?
Hi, good evening, council. I have a couple of things for you tonight. First thing, staff had their meeting with John Harkness from Toll Brothers to discuss the transition of the Lake Point Development. At the last council meeting, I had mentioned that that was on the horizon. They officially close on that July fourteenth, so that's going to be a big deal for us. It was a really high level meeting focused on immediate action items that they're wanting to get. Moving as they're doing this transition from Oak Point. A few of the actions of interest to you. Is that they plan to be more aggressive in finding dirt. So as you know, they have a hole out there to fill. They have to bring in. Dirt to create the subgrade for the roadway. So they're going to look to be more aggressive now that we're in construction season within the region. So. That that's actually exciting news for us. And as they are focusing on getting that dirt for their subgrade, they're also going to start finalizing and working through their final sets of plans for Lake Point Boulevard. With the intention to go out to bid by spring of next year. That's kind of the date we're driving towards. So, you know, we'll be supporting them in that effort. And then while they're doing all of that, really focusing on the roadway and getting that constructed. Their goal is to also kind of this later. Q three, Q four is to spend time with staff to really get grounded in the development agreement. They want to make sure that they're going into this, you know, fully understanding the agreement. And then anything that is that that needs to be addressed as part of that. They're also going to dial in on their site plan, so they're going to get, start kind of refining that and getting more specific. So we'll go from those. Just colored boxes to now starting to see potentially footprints in areas where retail is going. You know, and the housing is going. So that'll be really exciting, kind of rolling out the rest of this year. And then the big thing that we'll also start talking with them is really about this implementation. You know, how do they plan to face the project? What staff resources are needed to really keep pace with their development program? So. It's exciting and we're just going to be working alongside of them to do our best to get everything kind of grounded and then and have a plan forward. We did discuss scheduling time for Toll to come and talk with you as well as the planning commission. They do want to get in front of you as soon as possible. As you know, they're they're still kind of closing and getting their head wrapped around some. Some of this, these changes for them, but we'll continue to be working with that to get that scheduled. Also, they're working directly with Carla on materials to have for the city booth for Covington Day. So we'll have some basic info. Probably not too, not probably not too robust because just considering where we are and timing, but our hope is to have some information there for them. The other thing that I just want to give you a heads up on is that community development is applying for a climate action plan grant. That grants up to eighty thousand dollars. Some of you may have seen that through commerce, just kind of through AWC. While climate is not a requirement of the cop plan in this current update. It has been strongly advised that cities account for climate action in their cop plan updates. And the grant really has two categories. You could really focus on this greenhouse gas. Vehicle miles, travel emissions. Or which, or you can focus on vulnerability and risk assessment. And if we get this grant, whatever that dollar amount is, we plan to use that. As an opportunity to identify vulnerable populations and our assets. So that's social, economic and environmental. That will then help inform. So we'll kind of collect some data around this. That then can help inform policy decisions as we do our comprehensive plan update. So while we won't be doing something specific, our plan or intention is to just weave this into our cop plan and use that data to inform. Those areas that that we can begin to implement some of those strategies we learn about. And obviously, we may not get that full eighty thousand. So whatever we do get in that grant will tailor this work to match that grant dollar. And that is all I have for you tonight.
Any questions for Selena? Beth?
How are we doing on the hiring or the filling of the?
I'm sorry.
Filling of the vacancy? Ryan Archer?
Yeah, so we had interviews today. This was for an assistant planner position. We've got a handful of positions advertised. No decision was made today on the assistant planner. I'm actually going to be working with Noreen. Over the next week or two. We think we have some viable candidates that we would like to slot and bring onto our team, but we need to work through those. Um over the next week or two. We think we have some viable candidates that we would like to slot and bring onto our team, but um we need to work through those. Numbers with HR and also Casey, so FYI Casey.
I, I think Beth, were you asking about Ryan's replacement?
Ryan's replacement specifically, but I know there's other gaps.
Yeah, so, yeah, address Ryan's.
Yeah, sorry about that. Um so Ryan's, Ryan's replacement will be advertised. Um we don't have anybody. You know, slated for that position, nor have we started to receive applications. Um I will just say that we're kind of looking at the landscape of the community development department. Um and trying to figure out how we can get talent, raise talent, coach talent um to be able to build out the department, so. We'll, we'll see how that unfolds.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Selena. Uh Casey?
I just wanted to give you an update on the small business grant program. Um they've started to slow down. The applications have started to slow down coming in, but we were able to disperse about sixty thousand dollars. And help twelve businesses out in the community, so I just wanted to give you an update on that.
Thank you. I, did I cut you off? Was there anything else, Casey? Sorry.
No, that was it. Unless anybody had any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Casey. Regan? Did I steal your thunder?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, but yeah, my big news tonight was Adam is our new police chief.
Sorry, sir.
No, I didn't even know that was on there, so it was good, good catch. Um uh we just made it official today, actually, uh so we let staff know and that's why the, the. Thing was changed, so but we're just super excited. Uh. Because of Adam's work and, and the recommendations from so many, it became a really easy decision. Uh and so we're just truly grateful to have Adam. Um his, his police efforts are exceptional, but his character is, is even better, and that's uh extremely important. For this organization. So we're just really excited, so he got his congratulations and um we're happy to have him on board, so thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
And then Debbie, we'll, we'll get in touch and get an invitation back.
Mark?
Thank you very, thank you. Uh there's no executive session tonight and I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Krista?
Yes, I just want to congratulate our new Covington Police Chief, Adam Easterbrook. And I would like to also congratulate Debbie Hartzell on being appointed to council. That is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina?
Yes, uh what, what a Tuesday. Um I know everybody has gotten their chance, but I also want to thank each applicant who did apply. It was. It's not an easy choice. Um by any means, I agree with what Beth said. I hope lightning does not strike us down though. Um and big congratulations to Debbie. Your, your work in the community is obvious and this is, this is well deserved. Chief Easterbrook. Can't call you Adam anymore. I just, I just really want to congratulate you too. Um I recently had. An awesome opportunity of running into several officers. It was, it was a good thing. Um but without me pushing anyone, they, you know, they asked me if, if there's anyone I can whisper into whomever's ear that. Officer Easterbrook, well, no, I'm sorry, who you before? I'm so, so sorry.
I was sergeant.
Thank you, Sergeant. Sorry. That Sergeant Easterbrook needs to, needs to be the new chief and I'm glad that that made. Its way to the right ears and that you accepted and congratulations. We're happy to have you. Um. I don't know where summer went. It was here for a couple of days, but I'm excited uh moving forward and happy fourth, everyone.
Thank you. Before I go to you, Beth, Carla, um Regan. Um sorry, I miss your aunt Carla.
No worries. Um thanks, I just had a couple of updates to add. Um first of all, um mentioning Covington Days. Um you all should have received an email um to sign up for booth shifts. If you didn't get that email, just let me know and I can forward that to you again. We've got a couple signed up. Um but we definitely need some spots filled on Saturday. You couldn't fill more than one if you're so inclined. Um but also on Sunday, we will have our annual ice cream bar popsicle social. Um at Covington Days as well, so keep that in mind if you're available. Sunday afternoon also. Wanted to let you know that the Arts Commission and the Equity um Commission both plan on. Doing um activities at Covington Days this year. Um and then I also wanted to let you know for the parade, all of our twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Citizen Award winners will be participating um in the parade, so wanted to let you know that. Also wanted to let you know this week that Ready, Set, Play kicked off. And we have already handed out over one hundred and seventy lanyards to kiddos um at two different events. We have another event tomorrow at the park. Um to hand out more lanyards. Um and we have great prizes this year, including a fifty dollar savings account deposit from Red Canoe. Swim passes to our aquatic center, um crumble cookie coupons, um and a lot of other things that uh kids are really excited about. And then finally, for um another event, I know we've been really excited to announce that Cider Fest would be back this summer. Um but we're having a really difficult time um getting vendors. Unfortunately, with the past couple of years. Um it's just had a great impact on our small businesses, our small cideries. And they just don't have the staffing to be able to participate in very many events, so. Um it's looking likely that um we might have to cancel and it'll probably be in the next week that we just have to make that decision, so. Um I hate to be the bearer of that news, but if a miracle happens, great. Um but I just wanted to let you know that as well, so. If you have any questions, let me know.
Hey Carla, is our um city of Covington apparel going to be here in time for Covington Days?
Yes, I just talked with them um on Monday and they said that they're looking at it to arrive next, early next week, so hopefully that's the case. Um they just have one embroider, so she gets backed up when we have big orders.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Carla, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Right, Beth?
Thank you, yes. Uh congratulations, Chief. I, you know, you've been a chief in my heart ever since. I called you that last night, not realizing that it had, maybe it was foreseeing the future, I don't know. Anyway, congratulations. And then Debbie, thank. Congratulations. You're gonna be a fantastic addition to the council. Looking forward to working within that capacity. Um had the opportunity last week to uh attend the Association of Washington Cities Annual Conference. I would suggest, a lot of them um sessions were recorded. Uh and there's handouts. If you, if you can download those, go onto A W C's website, get an account set up. Those of you on council, it's, there's a lot of fantastic information. Um a lot of really hot topics that are important to cities um right now and. Uh just some, and also some very engaging um presenters, particularly on social media and what we can and can't say and do. And engaging with constituents. That was a huge one. It was, it was fantastic, so. I appreciate the opportunity to go and to share that experience with Jeff and me, it was great. And I will just say, Carla, if you need somebody to pull a pint, my husband and I will sign up. If you want to get us a liquor license, we will volunteer. Anyway, I know there's a lot. Thank you for um all your efforts trying to make this happen. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Beth. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh same, I will congratulate the chief, congratulate uh Debbie, and I will thank Jonathan um again for uh. Putting in their um application. We really appreciate your um commitment to this city. Um I've got a couple of things. Um I'd mentioned this to Regan coming in this morning, or this afternoon, noticing. Uh more aggressive panhandling in Covington, so um there are people that are. Actively walking down the middle of the street and soliciting donations for whatever it is, so yeah. Um I don't know what that's about, but I'm seeing more of it and just need to be aware. Um they were right over here on one sixty-fourth and two seventy-second. Walking right down the middle of traffic, so um just. For, if, if nothing else, it's unsafe for them to be walking in the middle of traffic, so. Um I really enjoyed the uh meeting last night on the business and occupation um uh tax. I, I, I learned a lot. Um actually with the, the group that we had, and I think we got some really good feedback and um. It was just good to hear, you know, how. Willing our community is to engage in conversation with us, you know, and I think we've built quite a bit of trust um with them. And the next steps are gonna be important on how we. Act on that, but one of the things I was saying afterward too is. This committee that um Beth and Joe and I are on, we're gonna come up with a report, but that's not the end of the conversation. This is just kind of the, the start and. It's a process. We're gonna continually try things to see if we can make the community safer, so I appreciated that. Um and then I guess the last thing I'll mention, um we did have a Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority meeting. Uh they are looking at hiring a similar position to like our community cares outreach, and so I mentioned that we were going through that process. And that when they get their person on, we should coordinate with them to see where we maybe overlap or how we can supplement each other. Because they're looking at that type of outreach as well, recognizing that they are. Servicing a number of people in crisis that maybe aren't, they're not having a fire or whatever, but I think. There's a synergy starting to develop between different entities that say. Um we need to have different tools to respond to these, some of these calls, so there'll be another resource in the community, and so. When we get ours on, I think we need to put them in front of the RFA and see how we can leverage our. Our two uh, two resources, so. I think that's it.
Great, thank you, Sean. Jennifer?
Um congratulations, Chief. I wish I would have known. I'm off today. Um and congratulations, Debbie, and thank you, Jonathan. You, as you know, you're. So appreciated for everything that you do for Covington. Um I'm really, 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 really excited about Covington Days. I know you guys probably hear me say this all the time, but I am beyond excited. I love the parade. Love, love, love. I'm so excited the, all the citizens and honorary citizens of the year will be able to um, you know, right up front and. I, are we tracking down six convertibles? Is that what's happening or multiple cars?
Yeah.
So.
Carla?
Oh, it's fine. I can wait and see. I'd be surprised.
Carla, are you still on? Stepped away.
Um so I'm really excited about that. I did uh sign up for some time and I wanted to encourage uh council members, just as a commissioner that's worked at Covington Days, I would encourage you all to stop by. And say hi and like, say, and look in the eye, shake their hand. Um it, really, that goes a long way as a commission member to feel that, you know, direct appreciation from council, and I just thought of that during. On our interviews. Um it, it really is important. As well as engaging with our residents. I learn a lot standing in that booth. People, it's amazing what they are uh wanting to share with you, so. Yeah, so excited to find them. That's it.
Thanks, Jennifer. Go.
Uh first, congratulations, Debbie. You are gonna make a great addition to this council. I'm looking forward to working with you. Chief, congratulations. Uh now I know who to complain to all the time with everything that's going on. I'm kidding.
Look out.
Uh you'd just be happy, uh when Chief Clayson was here, I'd be in his office once or twice a month just to hang out and talk with him and then complain. Luckily, your office isn't here anymore, it's. It's down the street now, so I have to make an extra effort. It was, it was. No, um congratulations. Ethan, is the dunk tank gonna be at Covington Days this year?
I believe so. Like ninety-nine percent sure.
Nice.
Okay.
I find it fun to be in the dunk tank, so if it is gonna be there for sure, let me know and I will sign up for a shift in the dunk tank.
I will pass that along. Thanks.
Uh I'm looking forward to Covington Days. I've missed Covington Days. Even, I may not be a fan of parades, but yes, I've even missed the parade a little bit. Uh so I will. As long as you aren't making me walk in the parade, I will be there for the parade, and now that I've said that, I'm gonna be walking the parade, just watch. I want to say it's summer. Uh it did go away today and tomorrow, but should be back for the weekend, then gone for a couple more days and then back. So it's a traditional Seattle summer. We're gonna have kids in the, out there in the streets playing. We're gonna have people walking their dogs. Be safe out there. Keep an eye out. So let's have a safe summer. Let's have some fun. Everyone enjoy your fourth.
Thank you, Joe. Yeah, I went to Vancouver for the Association of Washington Cities with Regan and Beth. Great, if you get the chance to sign up next year, it'll be in Spokane. The following year will be back in Vancouver and then um Kenoit. This year after that, but it is a great, it's not just the sessions where you learn a lot. Um the session that Beth was talking about. Mark Weaver is an attorney from back east and he gave three sessions on various topics that were. A wealth of information on what we can and cannot do or should not do on Facebook and social media. And um but it's not just the sessions, it's the connection you make with fellow electeds. And staff members and businesses down there that collaboration. When I'm there, I talk to the mayors of Eastern Washington on a regular basis, uh just to hear what they're going through and. And it's, it's just a great opportunity to learn a lot and meet with a lot of people. And um Spokane next year will be fun. That convention center has wifi. For some reason, wifi didn't work this year at A W C. And then Saturday, um this past Saturday, um while Jonathan was doing the pet food drive, thank you very much for that. Um Real Life Church was doing their event. The Covington Chamber Commerce did a health and wellness fair where they kicked off Ready, Set, Play. That was a very good event. It um. It was great to see people there and seeing kids show up um and all the businesses that were there as well um over at MultiCare. MultiCare was the. The title sponsor for that event. And Debbie, congratulations. Look forward to working with you up here. Reach out to me anytime. I'd love to sit down and talk with you. Warn you about, up here, no, just kidding. Um but Regan and Crystal will get you all set up and then. We can get together and talk about everything that's going on. Get you caught up in speed. You'll be drinking out of a fire hose for a while to learn everything, so. But uh you're gonna do well. And congratulations and thank you to all of our applicants. Jonathan, thank you for applying and. And Mark and Andrea and um Lori, uh it was great to have everybody apply. It was a very hard decision. Um and it was nice having people in person to be able to talk to on a panel, so it was very nice. Um with that, that is it for council staff comments. We'll go into our second of. Public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. And is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Is there anybody online wishing to address council this evening? Seeing nobody raise their hand, this council meeting is adjourned at nine twenty-one. Thank you all very much.